Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Eugene -- this public hearing -- this meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to hold a public hearing of the Eugene Planning Commission to consider a proposed code amendment that would allow a clinic operated by the United States Department of Veteran Affairs as a permitted use in the I-1 campus industrial zone. Before we begin, I'd like the planning commissioners to introduce themselves and then provide some time for staff to introduce the topic before we begin testimony. My name's Jeff Mills. I'm the chairman of the committee currently -- commission currently, and I'll ask the other commissioners to introduce themselves.
I'm Randy Lettich, the vice chair.
John Belcher, commission member.
And Bill Randall, commission member.
Tonight, we also have members of the city planning staff, President Alyssa Hansen and Lisa Gardner, who are here to help with any questions the commissioners may have. We'll begin with a brief presentation from staff and then open the public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, please fill out a request-to-speak form, the green forms, and bring it forward to staff. Just a reminder that the Planning Commission will not make a final decision on this or may not, I'm going to say, may not make a final decision on this proposed code amendment. We will, however, be making a recommendation to City Council -- oh, that's right, we will not make a final decision, but we will make a recommendation to the City Council. Time permitting, we will deliberate and make a recommendation tonight following the public hearing. With that, I guess we'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you.
Alyssa.
Great. The topic of tonight's hearing, as Commissioner Mills mentioned, is a code amendment to allow an outpatient clinic operated by the United States Department of Veteran Affairs as a permitted use under the government services category in the I-1 campus industrial zone. This amendment would apply to Table 9.2450 of the Eugene Land Use Code. Just for some background, this code amendment was initiated by the Eugene City Council in September to remove a barrier in the I-1 zone that restricts the siting of a government-operated Veterans Clinic. Members of our Eugene City Council have expressed support for the siting of a Veterans Affairs Clinic in Eugene. Although much of this siting process is controlled by the VA, the city does have influence through its land use code. Currently, clinics of all types are allowed in commercial zones with the exception of C-4, the commercial industrial zone. They're also allowed in three of our special area zones, Walnut, Whittaker, and Chase, and clinics are permitted in the R-3 and R-4, the limited high-density and high-density residential zones, subject to an approved conditional use permit. Clinics are not allowed in any industrial zone. This code amendment would only allow a government-operated VA clinic to be sited in the I-1 zone. Prior to the City Council's initiation of this code amendment, a code interpretation was submitted to the planning decision that essentially asked if a government-operated VA clinic would be considered an outright permitted use under that government use category in the I-1 zone. The planning director found that the use was permitted outright as a government use. However, this decision was overturned on appeal to the hearings official. The narrow scope of the amendment before you clarifies that a government-operated VA clinic is an allowed use under the government use category in the I-1 zone and would preclude the siting of any other types of clinics in the I-1. And also to clarify, this amendment is written with the intent to not include a VA clinic from siting in other zones where it's currently allowed now. So in other words, a VA clinic could still cite in a commercial zone as a clinic use. The Planning Commission does have before them a copy of testimony that was received late this afternoon from Kristin Taylor of TBG Architects on behalf of a client, and the letter is in support. That's the only piece of testimony we've received besides the email that's attached to the agenda packet for tonight. And then lastly, I want to say that the approval criteria at Eugene Code Section 9.8065 are applicable to code amendments, and based on those criteria, staff recommend approval of the code amendment.
Thank you, Alyssa. I'd like to open the public hearing of the Eugene Planning Commission. Please give us your name and address before beginning your testimony. We're going to limit the testimony duration to three minutes. As a courtesy here tonight, please cease your testimony when the buzzer goes off, and we encourage you to submit any written testimony you have as well. First person to be called is Kristin Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Taylor. My address is 132 East Broadway, Suite 200, and I'm with TBG Architects and Planners. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of Guard Publishing Company, who owns 60 acres of campus industrial I-1 property located along Chad Drive. And I did submit, as Alyssa said, a letter on behalf of Guard Publishing that I'll let you read later. I'm just going to touch on a couple points. Guard Publishing supports the adoption of the code amendment, and Guard Publishing shares the common challenge with all the I-1 property owners: the difficulty of developing I-1 property due to the exceedingly limited permitted uses and restrictive development standards, which reflect an outdated industrial market and development pattern. So the proposed code amendment to permit an outpatient clinic use operated by the United States Department of Veteran Affairs on I-1 zone properties is an excellent opportunity to open up viable sites for consideration by this valuable potential addition to our community, as well as an excellent first step in promoting desired and achievable I-1 development in our city. So in conclusion, without the code amendment and resultant development opportunity on I-1 properties, it will be difficult, if not impossible, to attract the development of a VA clinic in Eugene due to their program parameters and limited suitable available land in the city of Eugene. Therefore, I and Guard Publishing recommend that you recommend to the City Council adoption of the proposed code amendment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next speaker is Dennis Randazzo. If I mispronounced that, I apologize.
You got it right.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Dennis Randazzo. My address is 1851 Northeast 60th. I'm a commercial real estate broker. It's licensed in Oregon and Washington. And I wanted to testify tonight, based on the proposed code amendment and the specific use that's being identified for a VA clinic, I'm very concerned about the process that's being followed in order to provide this approval. In this situation, and over the course of 25 years plus, I've never been involved, and I've testified in numerous occasions in other municipalities about this, I've never seen a situation where a specific user was identified which excluded anybody else within that same use category. And so my contention is, in that situation, where do you draw the line? I mean, when it comes to a code modification like the city's promoting in this situation, so the, you know, the planning process in general was designed to avoid these kind of half-hazard approvals and guarantee the due diligence and the due process for making changes in an open and honest process that ultimately will impact long-range planning goals. In that situation, you know, to just simply add a specific zone to allow a single use, and especially one that's been previously denied and otherwise prohibited in the code, is in direct conflict with the foundation of sound urban planning. And even if it's adopted under the kind of a guise of an obscure legal interpretation, I think if the commission approves this modification and just adds the VA as an approved use, then, you know, what happens the next time that a potential user comes along that doesn't quite fit in with that context? Do you just add new language? Or do you just create a new zone? And in this situation, based on the complexity and the size of this use, you know, it seems that in the research that I've done, that it will only benefit a limited number of property owners and at the same time excluding potentially hundreds and maybe thousands of other property owners that can't qualify under that constraint. So I think this is a very dangerous process. I think it's a recipe for creating a situation where you can kind of do deals behind closed doors, and I think you need to be very careful about how you approach that process. And with respect to that, I'm opposed to the code amendment as being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randazzo.
Members of the commission, Bill Close, 375 West Fourth Street, Suite 204, Eugene. I'm testifying in support of this amendment. Kristin Taylor spoke on behalf of the Guard Publishing Company. My client is a would-be private developer of this clinic who would like to cite on I-1 land. I have the good fortune or the misfortune of being the guy that recommended to his client that he take a positive director determination that this specific use is okay on I-1 land and appeal that determination to the Eugene hearings official, because they said you need a really firm answer. And so we appealed to the hearings official, and the hearings official reversed the decision of the applying director and said, "No, you can't do this on I-1, the way the code is currently written." The positive reframe on all that is that we found out earlier, rather than later, that you couldn't do it under the old code, and so here we are. We're here because it reflects the city's policy decision that this is a good idea. Yes, it's a very specific tweak to the code, but when you have a code that is four inches thick and full of hundreds of discrete little uses, this is what it takes sometimes to reflect a policy decision. This doesn't cut anybody out of the competition, it just brings more people into the competition, and that's good. As for impacts on the I-1 zone, it's a difficult zone. I've heard it described as a de facto land bank in Eugene. That is, it's a zone that allows for uses that nobody really wants to make. Therefore, a lot of acreage sits idle. So here is a positive discrete step you can take to open the door to a use that somebody actually wants to develop. It's a very small change, it's completely defensible, reflects a policy decision. Ultimately, a policy decision's in the hands of the City Council. My recommendation is move it on to them as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Close.
Good evening. My name is John Pinkstaff. I'm an attorney with Lane Powell Law Firm in Portland at 601 Southwest Second Avenue. The reason I'm here today is I represent Dennis Randazzo, who just spoke to you. We are submitting a memorandum, which is being handed out to you now. I'll just hit the highlights. I think the -- want to be upfront with you that it, you know, we're not hiding the ball. We see some serious flaws with the process and the proposed code amendments, and would ask you to step back and look at this very carefully. We think it's a thinly veiled spot zoning ordinance, and that if you think that's okay, then we would like you to consider the following. There were several assumptions made, one being that this is a legislative act. It is arguably a legislative act or a quasi-judicial act, and I'm sure as Planning Commission members, you're well familiar with those differences. The effect would be, if it's legislative, it needs to comply with 227-180 ORS, that's how -- known as House Bill 56. And if it's quasi-judicial, then it has to comply with 197-763 of ORS, which is the standard notice and opportunity to be heard for quasi-judicial cases. In either case, we believe that the staff report does not completely provide an analysis of the effect of the proposed code amendment, because it would have an impact on other As a result of the hearing officer's decision that was -- has been referred to, the scheme and the code would, for C-1, C-2, C-3, and the geo-zones, had previously been interpreted to allow a VA clinic under the category clinic or other medical health treatment facility. But under this provision or this proposal, the VA clinic will henceforth be permitted as a government service category only in the I-1, which will effectively prohibit a VA clinic in all other zones. I respectfully disagree with the staff oral presentation at the beginning of this hearing because it was not in the planning staff report, and I don't understand how they could do this without making cross-references. Is that my time?
That's your time.
Okay. Let me just close by saying that the effect of this is that it violates procedural rules and also the transportation planning rule, because it will have an impact, a significant impact, on transportation facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkstaff.
Thank you. Teresa Bishow, 2911 Tennyson Avenue, Suite 400, here tonight speaking in opposition to the code amendment. We fully embrace the city's desire to comprehensively review the I-1 zone and to broaden the range of uses to help stimulate the economy. In the written material I've provided for you, I'll try to, you know, summarize it, but as presented by staff, the code amendment does not achieve the council's intention of increasing the allowed locations for the VA clinic. It actually substantially will decrease the number of sites, because once you specifically list where a VA clinic is allowed and you only include it in the I-1 zone, you are making it subject to vulnerability, any other zone being able to allow the clinic. The code amendment before the Planning Commission is a code amendment, and to expedite the change, including a reversal of a recent hearings official decision, without legally defensible findings, really jeopardizes the endeavor to assist the VA. Another point is that the draft findings concerning statewide goals are really lacking, and this creates opportunity for attack. What you're trying to do is broaden, increase the allowed sites for the VA. But again, once in one zone, you list a specific use, any place in the zoning code where you don't list that use, it's considered prohibited. I also want to point out that changing the Eugene code at this stage of the VA process at the 11th hour really jeopardizes the government's goal of ensuring a fair, competitive, and equitable process. While Arlie does support, again, reexamining the I-1 zone, we are a property owner of multiple I-1 zone sites. And I do -- this is hard in three minutes, so right now, I will request that the opportunity for public testimony be continued, as well as the opportunity to continue to submit written with the three-minute time limit imposed. I do want to refer to the material I distributed to you. We did provide for you a list of tax lots that are currently zoned I-1. The majority are either outside the VA delineated boundary, or they do not meet the size requirements. There are only two lots that are within the VA delineated boundary and that are vacant and that are above 13 acres, so you need to really recognize what's happening here. And you're creating potentially a far less certain environment, and you're actually penalizing property owners of I-1 who may have consulted with staff early in the VA's process and were informed that medical uses were not permitted. They followed the rules, they did not nominate a site. That period is over. So they can't submit. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I believe that there has been some erroneous information that has been given to you and to the public. Many times, we hear, and Mr. Close has said it, the city staff has said it, and that is, is that what this is going to do is open it up for other I-1 users and create more sites. Believe me, if there was a way to create more sites, we're behind it 100 percent, because we think that the proper facility for the veterans should occur as quickly as possible. But there's been a misrepresentation. Let me explain to you the process. The VA sends out what they call a pre-solicitation letter, and that is that if you think you have a site that will qualify for their criteria, you're to submit it. And when all these sites are submitted, the VA then nominates, from that group of sites, and nominates a site. They send a letter to those people that are nominated, and the people that aren't nominated, they send a letter rejecting them very politely. The nomination process has already gone through. We've received a letter, the Register Guard received a letter, and several others have received a letter. The door is now closed for any other I-1 users to submit a letter. So it's a misrepresentation to you to tell you that we're opening up more sites for the VA. That is not the case. And I think that it's very, very unfair for that to happen. Even the Chamber of Commerce, its publishing things, weren't supportive of this because it opens up more sites. This is for the Baker family and the Register Guard. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is they've knocked us out of the running altogether. Now, while we've withdrawn one of our sites, let's not forget we have another site, Arlie has another site that was approved that was seven and a half acres, and the word is that the VA may take Congressman DeFazio's advice and go to a more compact site. Right now, that site that was originally approved, that was the preferred site, is now off the table, because if this code goes through, they didn't see fit to put our site on there as also R-4 and General Office, as also being a site that could have diszoning designation. So we've been knocked out of the box, and that's fine. Finally, and I think I'm running out of time here, and I don't think three minutes is enough, because there's a lot to say, and we have a lot of experience in this, could really guide you people very well into making the right decision. But finally, this whole thing is a function, and we've seen it replayed time and time again, where the city of Eugene says, "You know, let's play a game of Monopoly. We don't want this particular facility here, we want it here, whether it's zoned or not." That's how we lost PSL, that's how we lost many, many locations of companies to Springfield is because of forced zoning, which I call forced zoning. Don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musonetsi. Before I close the public hearing, are there any comments or questions from commissioners? Commissioner Belcher.
I wonder, given the folks that have testified thus far, and the time that they have, if we couldn't give each an additional three minutes?
Sense of the commission?
I'm okay with that. So anybody who testified--
If anyone would like more time, we'll give you another--
Get it back. Another three minutes. Want to go through the same order and offer?
Yeah, why don't you do that? That way, we can make sure everybody gets another crack at this. The first name, and I apologize if I mangle any names again, Kristin Taylor. Additional? No? Dennis Randazzo. No? Bill Close.
Can't say no to that. [laughing]
This is such a luxury. Thank you very much. I just want to make two points. The first goes to the question of whether calling out this use as allowed in this zone implicitly makes it not allowed in any other zone. I didn't understand that's the intent of the drafting, and if there's any concerns about that at the city, it's so easy to add a sentence to the new listed use that says, "We're not doing that," and that issue just is put to rest, and that might be a good recommendation for the Planning Commission to make to the City Council. The second point, and last point, in response to John Pinkstaff's comments, I just want to flag for you, I mean, he used that magic phrase, "spot zoning." And I -- one of my favorite quotes from the Oregon Supreme Court is in a case called Anderson versus Payden, which is late '70s, I think. It was an appeal of a conditional use permit, and it's a long decision, but the Supreme Court drops back and takes a look at Oregon's land use scheme, which it rarely does, because it doesn't hear many cases, and it says, "There is no such thing as spot zoning in Oregon. In Oregon, zoning is a creature of statutes and statewide planning goals and administrative rules and comprehensive plans and zoning codes. It's all in the regulations. We don't do spot zoning in Oregon." So it's just kind of a mischaracterization. It's completely appropriate for the city to make a policy decision like this and amend the code to implement the policy. It's just as valid doing it one line, one sentence at a time as it is to do it in a total makeover of the code as the city did in 2001. After all, what's the chance you get it right exactly the first time as part of a total makeover? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Close. John Pinkstaff.
Thank you. I think, to begin with, we've, you know, the term "spot zoning" is an old term, but what I meant by it was that this is a single-use zone, it'd be like putting a gas station right in the middle of a residential zone or something like that, zoning that property specifically for that use. In other words, it's pretty well understood what that term means. Spot zoning in and of itself is not illegal, because we have a land use system that has comprehensive plans, zoning ordinances, regulations, and so forth. But that's pretty much the point I'm raising here, is that this is not following the comprehensive plan, the regulations. I mean, in other words, it's really a -- it doesn't pass the straight-face test. It's not a compatible use with the other industrial uses in the area, that's covered in our memo. It doesn't comply with the transportation planning rule, there's no analysis. This will clearly have greater traffic volumes than any other use in the industrial zone. It does affect other zones. Just saying that, "Well, we can just add a line," well, are you going to renotice this? So everybody's aware of this now? You know, that's just with a stroke of a pen. I think people have been -- have not been given an adequate and fair opportunity to understand and respond to this measure. And also, the fact that, you know, the Planning Commission, I hope, is an independent body and will be objective about this. And if not, you should be, because with -- you'll have the benefit of your local council. I urge you to have them look at these legal issues and advise you, and finally, the hearings officer decision is the controlling legal authority. Just saying, calling this a clarification and minimizing the impact of this when it runs directly contrary to the hearing officer's decision, I think is a disservice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkstaff.
Thank you very much for additional time. I do retain the request to continue the public hearing on written record, but thank you so much for the additional time. Just to reiterate a couple points, the council initiated a code amendment. They did not make a decision on how to receive your recommendation, and they did not make a policy decision. They took an appropriate step, perhaps, to initiate the public dialogue. So I do want to refute what Close said. Another thing I want to caution you about is doing another quick fix at this stage to rectify the draft code amendment before you, and yet raise even more concerns regarding adequate public notice and-- Just to reiterate a couple of points, the council initiated a code amendment. They did not make a decision on how to receive your recommendation, and they did not make a policy decision. They took an appropriate step, perhaps, to initiate the public dialogue. So I do want to refute what Close said. Another thing I want to caution you about is doing another quick fix at this stage to rectify the draft code amendment before you and yet raise even more concerns regarding adequate public notice and findings. To do it correctly, the draft code should include text being proposed for the I-1 zone in all commercial zones and any other zoning districts where the allowance of a VA clinic is not contested. This step in the code amendment process is critical to ensure fair and equitable treatment among property owners and give the VA assurance that Eugene is not changing the land use regulations in a restrictive manner at the 11th hour. To reiterate, any site in Eugene that the VA has determined acceptable for a new clinic that currently has proper zoning is at risk if this draft code amendment is approved as presented, and it would be a travesty if the intent to increase the number of sites has the reverse effect. To give you another example, if you amend the code and you delineate that the VA clinic goes to I-1, what message are you sending to our existing VA clinic? They would immediately upon adoption become a legal but non-conforming use. Has that property owner been notified that you're even contemplating removing the use that they are currently using for their building? So again, if the code amendment is to go forward, the VA clinic either needs to be, that zone needs to be changed as well, or at a minimum, Table 9.1240 regarding legal pre-existing uses needs to be, they need to be called out and grandfathered in. Staff heavily, you've seen code amendments before, you've seen plan amendments, you've seen zone changes, where the applicant's material is almost a third of the code itself. The weight of the findings does not change if it's a text amendment to one page in the book versus a more complex set of amendments. And staff are asserting this as clarifying the existing code, and the vulnerability that your action would take if it were to be adopted is huge. The potential for further confusion among the VA in terms of appropriate zoning and among the parties involved in the process would be profound. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bisal. Mr. John Musuneci?
Musuneci.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Of you all to give us another three minutes. I really appreciate that, and I'll walk out of here feeling a little bit more complete in the information that we all share with you. What we haven't done here is talk about the veterans, and that's who I want to talk about. The veterans are waiting for this new state-of-the-art facility. It was committed to us by the veterans, and we've had a lot of discussion with the VA. We've been dealing with them now since, not last May, but May of last year. And they were supposed to come out with their SFO, which is a custom-tailored telephone-book sized document, on each of these specific sites. They were going to come out with it in the first week of October, and this came up. Now, they want to have as many sites as they can have because they want the competition to drive the price down for us, the taxpayers. And they delayed putting out that SFO based upon this hearing. Now, what really got delayed was the veterans and the services to the veterans because this new state-of-the-art facility is going to give them the health care that they need, and it'll be much better than their travels to Portland or to Roseburg, where they're currently going. So they're at risk here, and we keep having these delays. Now, I don't know what your decision is going to be, but I'm real curious. Does the Veterans Administration delay this throughout the appeals of the result of this? Do they wait for LUVa? Do they wait till the Court of Appeals? And do the veterans in our community end up being delayed because of this land use issue? This is not the right way to go about it. Now, I started talking about, they had a perfect site, it happened to be ours, doesn't need to be ours, our concern is for the veterans. The city, planners here, make a decision. We think it's better off over by the Belt Line so everybody can see our trophy. Well, guess what? That's at great expense. The final thing I want to say is, when we appealed, the hearings official, is when the requirement was six acres. And the hearings official said the VA cannot go on that, it's not permitted there. Three weeks later, the Veterans Administration decides that they want 13 acres, and Mr. Cluse's client res submits without any mention to the VA of this negative ruling against them. We're wasting a lot of people's, we're wasting a lot of people's time with this whole thing. This is not going to work, and it's going to end up being a train wreck for everybody. But most importantly, the people that have served us overseas, the people that are really important in this whole thing, and that's the veterans. So I want to, thank you very much, and I want to mention that Teresa is the author of this code and worked on this code, and I would ask you to seriously read what she has written here because we don't do any puffing over here. We're trying to give you direct information, and you'll find it in this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musuneci. Before I close the public hearing, are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Well, at some point, we have to drop the dogs' requests to leave the public record open.
That's what I'm thinking about. So should we talk about that now?
Sure.
Okay.
Ask staff what their thoughts are on that issue.
Well, Steph has not had an opportunity to read this information, so I mean, that's one consideration to think about.
If I may?
Yes.
Having this information tonight, too, I don't feel ready to deliberate. I actually would like to see the hearings officials' ruling, if we may as well. So I don't think we're going to, at least I'm not willing to go here tonight, so there may be some value in leaving the record open while we have a chance to get more information.
Other comments on that?
I agree with that. I'd like to see the hearings officials' determination and kind of have a little more history on how we got here.
Commissioner Lettich?
Yeah, I'm the same way. What do you think, two weeks to keep the record open?
I'm looking at the calendar.
Given the Thanksgiving holiday, you might want to bump it to the second, Friday the 2nd?
Of December. Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Would that work for the public?
So do we need to do a formal vote on that? I think I've got a vote of hands for that, that we're recommending it be extended to December.
2nd at 5:00 PM.
2nd at 5:00 PM. 2nd? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, keeping me straight on Robert's rules. So with that, the record is left open, the public hearing is closed. And I'm not sure where we go from here. What are, John?
Well, I assume staff would like to know what information or questions we have answered.
Yes.
If you have any clarifying questions today, it'd be helpful to hear those.
Very good. Commissioner Lettich, did you have anything else to offer?
No, do you want to go, John?
Go ahead, John. Sorry.
I guess, to put it simply, it would be nice to hear response to the allegations that, first of all, if we do specifically state that it's allowed in this zone, would it preclude the other zones? And if not, would language appropriate to make that happen? Ancillary to that is if indeed we're talking about a change in the proposed language, where does that take us as far as public notice in response? I realize we do have another hearing before the council, but is that sufficient, or do we have to go back to square one? Would be my question.
Okay, and I can actually answer those tonight, but I can follow up as well. It sounds like I'll have some information to provide you in advance of deliberations. But the intent of this and how it was crafted, and I did work with Emily Jerome with the city attorney's office, the intent is, by narrowing, you know, having this narrowly limited in scope and having it as a government service use, that it would still be allowed outright in those other zones as a clinic use. So the other particular zones don't specify what type of clinic, they just say clinic. And so that was the intent with that. If the Planning Commission feels uncomfortable, and we can look further into that and, if necessary, propose language that would strengthen that if need be. Because it is a legislative action, that would just be your recommendation to the council. That often happens with other code amendments where there's a code amendment before you. Generally, they're a little larger in size, and the Planning Commission says, you know, we want this to be six feet instead of five feet, and that does not require renotice.
Commissioner Randall.
I guess my question, that was actually my question, too, as far as whether it would preclude a clinic, or the veterans, outpatient clinic in the other zones by specifically saying this. Then I guess my other question is, is there a problem if we decide to go that way of amending the I-1 zone to include just clinics and other medical health treatment facilities like it's worded in the other portions of the code? If there's...
So you mean actually broadening this particular code amendment, or...
Rather than being so specific, if that's a direction that we, because that, kind of what I'm hearing is, you know, again, well, I guess, just...
Go ahead.
Yeah.
You're doing fine.
Yeah, I guess what I'm hearing is this is getting very specific, and I know the zoning code typically is not always that specific and rightfully so, I think. So I guess my concern is, by saying specifically outpatient clinic operated by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs is very specific and is not anywhere else in the code, would it be more appropriate, if that's the direction we wanted to go, to say, clinic or other medical health treatment facility like we have in other parts of the code? I guess that's a question that I'm having that right now, I'm struggling with, and then, you know...
Okay.
Maybe that's enough.
Okay.
At this point. And then I guess my other question would be, I heard two different things as far as who actually appealed this originally.
Okay. Let me, I can, that I can clarify. So the code amendment was submitted by Bill Close on behalf of a, I can't remember if it's a developer. The hearing, let's see, so it was a code interpretation, the planning director made a decision saying, yes, it was a code interpretation. Right, so Bill Close submitted a code interpretation on behalf of a client, asking if this, if a VA clinic would be considered a government use in the I-1 zone. The planning director said, yes, I agree, that would be an allowed use. Bill Close appealed that to get a final decision at the local level. As part of that appeal, Arley did participate in that appeal, and the hearings official overturned the planning director's decision.
So Bill Close initiated the appeal. Did Arley join the appeal then? Is that...
I know they participated, but...
Correct. Questions for now.
Commissioner Lettich?
Yeah, Elizabeth, I've got three or four that came to mind before we heard all this testimony, but I agree with John and Bill that we need to have some, perhaps, legal review of this regarding the, what you talked about, limiting, how this might limit uses in other zones, that issue that was raised. But I had other issues to begin with. I looked at the purpose of the I-1 campus industrial zone, and in part, it says that the purpose of the campus industrial zone, uses there typically have a large number of employees per acre. And then it says, "The zone is designed to provide sites for large-scale offices that provide scientific and educational research function or directly serve manufacturing uses or other industrial or commercial enterprises and not the general public." At least in the analysis of Goal Nine with the statewide goals, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is a couple of things, is how this particular use jives with the other uses that are currently permitted in the I-1 zone. For consistency regarding large number of employees per acre, if there was some determination when the code was originally developed, and if it may have been amended over time, how those uses were identified and how this compares to those uses, particularly in regard to the large number of employees per acre. And then I'm still having also some difficulty in trying to figure out how a clinic is either a large-scale office or an educational research function that directly serves manufacturing uses or other industrial or commercial enterprises. The statement that it's a government service and comparable to what exists or similar in any way maybe expands on what is currently identified as a government service. Currently, it says government service is not specifically listed in this or any other uses and permit requirements tables. An example could include a fire station. And I guess I'm having a bit of a problem seeing how a clinic is a government use is similar to a fire station, where a fire station is there to protect not just that area but serves maybe a broader neighborhood, whereas a clinic is going to draw people. Now, it probably will not be the general public. General public would not qualify, as far as I know, for a veterans clinic. But nevertheless, it serves people. And the way I read this is that we're not wanting the I-1 zone to generate that kind of traffic, I guess is what it's getting at. And then that takes me to the GO-12 analysis, and somebody said it, it might have been Mr. Pinkstaff, talks about how this use would run against the TPR. And my question was, how is the consistency with the number of trips generated by this particular veterans clinic, how does it compare to the traffic that would be generated by other uses in the I-1 zone? I think we need to have an analysis of that or some commentary on that because I know as we get into, you know, go back, I don't know if Commissioner Belcher is quite in line with this, but when we talk about proposals and we get into the TIAs and whether or not it's a permitted number of vehicles that are allowed, we always try to go back, well, the plan says it's high density or commercial and should have been analyzed at that time, that that kind of use probably did not impact the streets in the area. We get kind of tied up in that. So I'm also thinking, it seems like when we were dealing, or when other jurisdictions dealt with Peace Health in Springfield, there was some issue about analyzing the traffic impacts at that time, and maybe that's not similar, maybe that was a zone change or something that was quite different from this. But I think that this discussion of transportation and the GO-12 rule needs to be fleshed out a little bit more than just the conclusion that we come to. And then finally, I know there's a comment in the staff report that says that the metro plan and the refinement plan, this proposal is not inconsistent with the metro plan and refinement plans, but having worked on the Willackensie refinement plan many, many years ago, something wrung in my head that that addressed a clinic. And sure enough, on page 67 of the Willackensie refinement plan, there are two, I think they're policy statements, yeah, policies and proposed actions, number 11 and 12, that seem to define where a clinic and hospital facilities can be located. And here, it gets pretty specific that they're to be located in the Coburg Crescent area that is designated for high-density residential use. Doesn't say anything about campus industrial in here. So I don't know, just to be on the safe side, I think there's more discussion that needs to be made regarding the application of the refinement plan. I haven't even looked at the metro plan to see what kinds of provisions may or may not be in there, but I think based on all the findings that we typically run through, we're a little bit, we're kind of cutting a corner here on this without further discussion. So GO-9, GO-12, the definition of government services, as it pertains to the use that's currently in the code, and then some analysis or discussion of the Willackensie refinement plan, policies 11 and 12 on page 67.
Commissioner Belcher.
Just following up on what Commissioner Randall suggested, could we just make clinics an outright allowed use in our one, I-1, excuse me? If we go down that path, it'd be nice to have some thoughts about what potential problems that might create.
Mm-hmm.
So this council...
Other comments or questions from commissioners?
Does that keep you busy for two weeks?
If there are no other questions from commissioners, I guess I wanted to confirm that the deliberations will be held Monday, December 12, our next meeting is scheduled for that purpose. And with that, I guess we'll close this hearing and this meeting of the Planning Commission.
Can I remind folks when they need to have their testimony?
Say again.
You might remind folks, keep the business on which day to...
Close the business on the 3rd? Second. 5:00 PM, December 2nd, the record will close. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.